Yeah.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Carly has the agenda on the screen. Most of our council members are here. Juliana from FACE, you're here, welcome. Carly, Eloise, you're here as well, welcome. Would you please do the roll call?
Okay, Joseph Di Benedetto.
Present.
Okay, Christine Caniglio.
Present.
Hi Christine, Tawana Rivera. Tawana?
Present.
Okay, Rashmi Krishnraj.
Present.
Victor Lee.
Present.
Liligui Yanti. Lilic? I just saw... Okay, I'll come back to Akila Sorio.
Present.
Monica's not going to be with us tonight. Edward Kim.
Present.
Brooke Sturgeon.
Present.
And Anne Marie Knebel.
Present.
Lilic, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm in here and I'm here too.
Okay.
Perfect. So we do have a quorum present and we're able to move forward with our meeting. With some substance, once again, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting. Tonight, we are here for one specific purpose, which is to review and perhaps vote on whether we, as a council, as a single and unified body, will sign on to the petition, "Don't Leave NYC Students With Disabilities Lost", which has been circulating throughout the city. This being done upon motion and request of CEC Councilmember Tawana Rivera. I would like to set the ground rules on how this special meeting will be run. I will submit my instructions and the petition will be displayed on the screen. Carly will also post the link in the chat. The council was already provided with the opportunity to review it. And our purpose this evening is to discuss it and deliberate it as a council. And ultimately, vote by roll call on whether we agree to sign off on as one collective body. This is not a Q and A, as this is not a public hearing. Total public comment time can be limited with a vote from the council. We will start with public comment. If you want to speak, if you haven't already done so, I will ask that you sign up for public comment by indicating your first and last name on the chat with the words "speak". I will suggest that we limit the public comment to our elected officials and our constituents. As a council, we are responsible to our constituents who voted us in. So please limit the speaker list to parents of District 25 as we represent them. Are we okay as a council on that? Councilmembers?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I make... Joe?
I'm gonna continue, one second. Christine, are you okay with the rules about limiting the public speakers to members of our constituent group?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Let me continue, Christine, and I'll take your comment in a moment. I have asked Juliana Fredoroff of the Office of Family and Community Empowerment to keep the time limit and to limit it to two minutes per speaker during the public speaking time. Do I hear any motions to put a time limit on the total public comment time? Okay, Christine, you had a comment, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm having technical difficulties. I'd like to make a motion to limit the total speaker, public speaking time to, say, thirty minutes in total.
I'm going to have to hear a second on that motion, and I think we need to vote on it.
I second the motion.
So Victor seconded the motion. So the motion is resolved. Correct, Juliana? We will allow public speaking time at two minutes per individual with a cap of...
Now you, sorry, now you vote on it.
I'm sorry? We need to vote on it? Okay.
Now you vote on it.
Okay.
Now go ahead and vote.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I just want to be clear and, you know, for the record, that we are, Christine made a motion to limit the total public speaking time to thirty minutes. So let's go through the roll call and vote on that.
Joseph Di Benedetto.
Agreed, yes.
Okay, Christine Caniglio.
Yes.
Tawana Rivera.
Do not agree.
Okay, Rashmi Krishnraj.
Thirty minutes, that's good.
Okay, sorry. Victor Lee.
Agree.
Liligui Yanti.
Agree.
Akila Sorio.
Agree.
Edward Kim.
Great.
Brooke Sturgeon.
Agree.
And Anne Marie Knebel.
Agreed.
Okay, Juliana, correct me if I'm wrong, so we can now limit the public speaking time to thirty minutes in total as we have more than a quorum that voted on it, is that correct?
Yes, as soon as the public speaking session begins, I will set a timer for thirty minutes and I will allow, I will let everyone know when that thirty minutes has passed.
Wonderful, thank you. So, once the public comments are concluded, I will then move on to the council deliberations. I will allow each council member here the opportunity to make statements as to why we should sign on to the petition, or perhaps why should we not sign on to this petition as a single and unified group. Once we have gone through each council member's statement, we will take the vote by roll call and render out the where the meeting whereby will be concluded. Do we understand? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to give the floor to our public comments time, and I know that Senator Lou is here and he had registered to speak, so I'm going to give him the floor at this moment. Senator Lou, good to see you. You don't have to, okay.
Thank you very much, Joe. Thanks for allowing me to be part of the public participation. I will not take more than my two minutes. The petition before this council, I believe, is important. This is, these are parents who, whose kids have been extremely, they were short-changed, honestly, short-changed before COVID-19. And this past year where we've gone to full remote learning for the end of last school year, and even in this school year, where the remote learning has not been as robust as it could be, or in-person learning available to students with special needs, it is a, it is a time when we have to take a stand. And, you know, we're talking about inequities and disparities in our system. The, I, I know firsthand how difficult the Department of Education has had it. They're dealing with a pandemic they never had to deal with before. But at some point, as we start getting things back to normal, we also have to pay attention to the significant numbers of families who have students with special needs. And we don't want to lose an entire generation of these students. Also, thanks for the reminder of how many, how much time I have left. So, you know, some of the proposals that this group is making are, are very common sense not to have the Department of Education have staff that are supposed to be helping special needs students take on multiple responsibilities at the same time. Ensuring that, for example, certified special education teachers are actually hired to fill the gaps. There's a, there's actually a very robust report that has been issued. I've read it thoroughly. I encourage council members to read it as well. It's, it's easy reading, and I don't have time to go through all ten or dozen points that they've outlined. But I just want to say that it is, it would be a good thing for the council. And I encourage the council to put this kind of resolution forth, because the Department of Education will pay attention. And those of us in legislative oversight capacity capacities would do so as well. So, thank you to CEC 25 for holding this special meeting tonight. And thanks, Joe, for the privilege of speaking.
Thank you, Senator Lou. It's always a pleasure to see you, and it's always a pleasure that you support our district. And thank you for joining us this evening, and thank you for your comments.
Thanks.
Thank you again. So next on my list, I have Heather Daly. Is Heather here?
Is, there is a Jordan Daly here? Is that perhaps the same account? The same family?
Jordan Daly, you're also on my list. Are you together with Heather?
Yes. So Carly, if you would unmute Jordan.
Hold on, I'm having a hard time seeing the screen. Sorry, guys. There we go. Thank you. All right. Okay, Heather Daly. Jordan Daly? Is that the same?
So Jordan Daly's still holding up that she cannot unmute.
I got you, I got you. I did it already. I'm asking you to unmute.
Hello.
Good evening, Ms. Daly. Nice to see you.
Jordan, come here. I want to give Jordan a chance to talk a little bit just about how his experience has been at school. Come here. He's a little bit shy. He has his cat. This is his, his, like, support animal that helps him. Um, Jordan, come on, pay attention. We have a short period of time. They're gonna cut us off.
Good evening, Jordan.
Hello.
Nice to see you.
So, do you remember we talked a little bit about what you wanted to say about how school is?
Yes.
How's school been?
Not so well.
Yeah, and why?
Too much rapid testing randomly.
Okay, and why is that? Why don't you like that?
It's randomly, like, you're doing a test and then they call and say, "We want, oh, we want the whole class to test."
And then interrupt today?
Yes.
And then what happens if you test positive? Then what happens?
You have to instantly go into a quarantine room. No one tells you if you're positive.
Okay, and talk, can you tell them about remote learning?
Yes, I do not like remote learning because there's too much distractions. The distraction of too much kittens. The distraction of cats, of toys, animals, TV.
Yeah. So, so I'm just gonna chime in, just, that's just a minute of what it's like trying to, you know, have him remote learn.
Oh yeah, by the way, I wish you shouldn't have homework.
Um, and... Yeah, it's a lot of homework. So, my concern is, like, how much is a child on remote learning, learning in school? We've been quarantined several times, which I'm actually, I have concerns about how they do the cutoffs for that, but, um, but when we're remote, he's learned, he's, he's losing skills. He's not, he's not learning to the optimum of his ability. As you can see, even distracted here for a minute on a phone call. So, just to give you a picture of what it's like for us, so the petition would protect that and would kind of force them to have a plan to make sure that these kids aren't being left behind. So I think that it's really important that we push to make sure there's an actual plan instead of telling us over, "We're working on it, we're working on it." Parents are tired of hearing, "We're working on it." You know, we want to know, it's been like, almost, it's been like, a year now, which is a year and a half of lost time for them, sometimes more. That's it, I'm finished.
Robot.
I'm not getting you.
Thank you, Ms. Daly, and thank you, Jordan. You did a wonderful job. We appreciate that you were able to comment. Thanks again. Okay, Carly, I just want to make sure we have the link for the petition in the chat. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Next on our list, I have Heather, Heather Daly, are you here? Oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's what you just spoke. Julia Olszewski. Hi, Julia, can we unmute Julia, please? Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome and thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. I really appreciate this special meeting to hear from parents. I'll wait for my, my timer. Oh, we started, okay. So I'm here this evening to share because the virtual platform is not accessible for my District 25 special needs student. Yet he and students like him have not been prioritized for in-person learning. When I say that the virtual learning platform is not accessible to him, I do not mean it's merely inconvenient or challenging, as it is for his genet younger brother. I mean that his disabilities prevent him from gaining access to his education through a screen. The board-certified behavior analyst assigned to his case has observed several virtual learning days with him, and has given us her professional assessment that our attempts to have him engage with the virtual learning are actively detrimental, worse than if he had nothing at all. He's in a self-contained special needs classroom that holds a max of eight students per grade. Due to this size constraint, his entire class could have attended five days a week from September. However, his school leadership team felt strongly it wasn't fair to everyone if they prioritize students with disabilities for in-person learning. Therefore, he attended with his entire class only other cohort days, while some of his teaching team taught from the empty classroom on other days. He had access to his education for a total of eighteen days this fall. Since last March, we've watched him deteriorate. He's lost a tremendous amount of language, words he had since the age of three. He's eight now. He's lost basic functions needed for activities of daily life. He's become so dysregulated that he will stay awake straight through the night screaming for a school bus that's not coming. Clearly, this pandemic has impacted everyone, but not the same. And the refusal to prioritize our special needs students, particularly those with self-contained placements for in-person learning, is causing further and unnecessary harm. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olszewski. We feel, you know, we feel in your pain, and we appreciate that you were able to make your comment.
I appreciate you.
Next, I have Rachel Ford. Is Rachel Ford here?
I gotta unmute her, hold on. I can't see.
Yeah, I want to keep the public comment portion moving. I don't want to block anyone out, so.
Where's Rachel? This is so hard to do this way.
Again, I ask while you, while you unmute her, that if there's anyone else that would like to make a public comment, that you put your first and last name in the chat and the indication that you want to speak, so we will call on you.
Hi, my name's Rachel Ford. I'm, I'm a parent of a child in a CEC 25 school. I'm a CEC 25 parent. And I also am with Special Support Services, so I'm also a special education advocate. And part of why we undertook this whole effort, both doing a report of eleven hundred parents throughout the city, and also, which, you know, this report not only garnered lots of attention in the press, but also managed to get fifty of our city and state legislators to sign a letter to the mayor, asking him to take action and prioritize students with disabilities. You know, I think that's remarkable. That's something I've not seen before in all my time of doing this sort of work. And that just speaks to how great the problem is. And I want to be a hundred percent clear that I am very supportive of educators, teachers, principals, administrators, who are working so hard, including the team at my daughter's school, who are just tireless and doing everything they can to try and make my daughter's experience, you know, work. But the truth is, the remote is very tough for her, and her challenges are largely social, so the issues of having to, you know, navigate a social environment, learning that, that all really needs to happen in person, not in squares, because when it's in squares, that means that it's really hard to, you know, learn sort of the hidden social rules, right? But she's one of the lucky ones. I really feel for the kids, like the Ms. Oseroff who spoke earlier, that have kids in self-contained classes that are not in District 75. So, again, it's really important, like Senator Lou said, to get the attention of Albany and let them know that this is a priority. So I really encourage you to please sign on as a CEC. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Well spoken. Is there anyone else on our list, Carly? Because I'm, you're sending me the list, but I don't see speakers.
That's it that I see. I don't, I don't think I'm missing anyone. If I am, please put in the chat.
Verify again that if you want to speak, please write your first and last name in the chat. Carly, are you willing to say those instructions in Spanish, please?
Sure. I'll say it or type it.
Both, please. Can you say it first?
Si quieren, si quieren participar en la sección de comentarios, por favor pongan, por favor pongan su nombre en un estado chat, su, su primer nombre y su apellido y diga la palabra que quiero hablar. All right.
So yes, I do, I see that there is a Spanish-speaking.
It was a comment.
Okay, but I want to give that parent, if they want, if that parent wants to comment even in Spanish, the opportunity to speak. So do you want to ask that parent directly?
Okay, hold on. Let me, whoa, all right, hold on. It's, um...
I don't see names, that's why.
But it's not, it's from an organization.
Okay, you can still ask, Carly. Let's see if they want to comment.
I think they commented in the chat.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna do. I'll put in the chat, Joe.
Is the comment in this, in the chat, is that what you're saying, Brooke?
Yeah. Um, I can't read it, sorry. I'll immediately read it.
Karina Lopez would like to speak.
Karina, we are still within our thirty minutes. I will give you the opportunity to speak. Welcome. Can we unmute Karina, please?
I'm asking her to unmute.
And I believe she may want to talk.
I don't want to show my face, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, I'm speaking in Spanish now. So, yo quiero, I want to concern because mi hija va, I speak therapy. El problema es que no está aprendiendo nada y cuando mi hija le dan la clase de speech therapy por treinta minutos, la niña no se enfoca porque lo que tiene son tres años y medio.
Déjame, déjame traducir, espérame. She said, she has a, she has a daughter, three years old, takes speech therapy, and she's, she feels like her daughter's not really gaining anything from the therapy at this time. Siga.
Okay, déjame hablar mal paso, me emocioné. Cuando coge la clase, entonces la niña no se enfocas.
When she takes the class, so her daughter doesn't focus.
El speech therapy me dice a mí que ponga algo como para cubrir la rededor para que ella se enfoques. Eso no es normal porque ese tres, tres años lo que tiene la niña no es lo mismo en la computadora que ir de personal.
Sí, okay. She's saying that the speech therapist tells her to, has told her to try to, like, cover her, and she's saying, "How can you want me to cover a three-year-old, you know, to cover her space?" She's three years old, that's not normal.
Entonces ella, ella, ella no, no, she refused, go back to the school. So, eso me está dando la ciudad, me está dando la oportunidad, entonces lo que quería cambiar de escuela para que ella vaya personal.
He wants her daughter, she wants her daughter to go back to school so she can go in person. Uh-huh.
Entonces, esa es mi pregunta. Y la otra pregunta es, si, por ejemplo, hay uno, un curso que salió con el COBIO o la profesora, lo que sea, del staff, no es normal que cierren la otra, el otro curso tampoco.
¿Cuál curso?
Cualquiera, cualquier curso que de primero, segundo, tercero, cualquiera.
Against elementary school being, usted está contra la escuela estar cerrada, entonces lo que está diciendo.
Sí, que la cierran por, por, no, por un solo...
Yes, she doesn't agree that the whole school should be closed for one, for one case of COVID, or the whole closed for one case of COVID.
That's my question, no, that's it.
That's her comment, or her question.
My comment, not my question, my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. We appreciate your comments. And we thank you for that. Are there any other, how much time do we have on the public speaking time, Juliana? We have time, right?
We have thirteen, this is a, we've been taking public comments for sixteen minutes now.
Okay, so are there any other parents or anybody in the public that would like to make a comment? I will entertain that. If you put your name in the chat, I don't want to exclude anyone if they would like to speak within our time constraints. I will allow, because we don't have other parents from District 25, I will allow, gracias, I'm sorry.
Jessica.
Verica to speak. Welcome, Jessica. Can we unmute Jessica?
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to speak.
No problem. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I am not in District 25, but I think we can all agree that the problem that our children, our children are facing plagues all of our children, especially our most vulnerable children, our black and brown children, our impoverished children, our children whose parents are disabled, who have lost their jobs, who have housing and, and food insecurities. Special needs are just something on top of all of that. And me personally, I'm a white mother to white children who have multiple disabilities, all three of them. One is medically fragile, but my children will be okay. And I fight hard because of the children whose voices may not be there and whose parents may not be able to sit on this call with you today. So I ask that everybody here, remember those children, and please vote to support this petition for those children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. Am I muted or am I on? I'm sorry, I can't tell. Can you hear me, Carly?
We can hear you.
I'm sorry. So, thank you. I see Jennifer Johnson. Is Ms. Johnson here?
Hi.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you, letting me speak? I am a District 25 parent of a child in an 811 Horizon program. He's got autism. And in many of these meetings, I hear, and whenever talking with parents, I hear other people say, "I don't know how to teach my child. I'm not a special ed teacher. I'm not a special ed teacher." I hear it again and again. And I'm going to tell you, I am a special ed teacher. I've done this for twenty years. My specialty is working with children with autism. And I have a great kid who's very verbal, and I have every, seemingly every advantage that you could want from somebody to have in the school system, and I'm telling you, I can't make it work. I've got a son who's been in, I'm sorry. This is why I don't want to talk. I know I will cry.
We can stop the clock for a moment, if you want.
He's been in maybe thirty-five, thirty-six days of an entire year. due to not being allowed in full time initially. And not, and, and the closures and the quarantines and all of that, and some of it I know is necessary for safety. But when I'm telling you, I watched this child and he tries to sit and he tries to do everything and he's social and he's verbal. But, and he's got a great teacher and he's got a great school. But he can't process it when Zoom is going in all different directions and the, the, the language gets lost for him. And I see him frustrated and not progressing with his writing and he needs to be able to have, have progress and to have a career and to do those things that he, that he will want to do like everybody else. And I'm terrified at this time that I don't see, I don't see this happening. And I even hear people talking about maybe even in the fall, it won't be the same. And I'm telling you, if I can't make it work, I don't know how else other, others would. And so I just, it's really important that everybody's on board with this. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We appreciate your coming on and your being honest. And, you know, we give you credit for that and we thank you. That makes a difference. Thank you. So I see Jennifer Choi. Are you here, Jennifer? Are you next? We have time, correct? Juliana, we're good. Jennifer, welcome.
Okay, hi. So I, I, I wanted to let you know that I'm here because Ms. Everett invited me in case the council had any questions and I'll stay until the end of the meeting. But I wanted to say thank you so much to this council for doing something so special and so amazing about having this discussion. It's so, it's, it's so honorable of you to have this discussion. And I don't know any other CEC that's doing this. I mean, there's CECs that have had town halls. But, you know, this is a really important day, I feel. And I under, I, I watched the rest of your business meeting from a couple of weeks ago, and I was happy to hear all of these, you know, all of the considerations that was being made at 11 o'clock, past 11 o'clock at night. And I wanted to say thank you so much for doing this. You know, the fact that you're even talking about it is amazing to me. But, you know, to address one point, I don't think any parent of a student with an IEP to, would think that if this council signed this position as a group, as a council, I don't think anybody would think that District 25 would have every single thing that is mentioned on the petition as a specific problem that is experienced at District 25. Although you've heard of all of these parents here talking about the problems that they faced, I think what the meaning, if you sign this as a group, as a council, you'd be telling everyone that you stand for children with disabilities. You stand for our children, that you care and that you want us noticed because we have been in the dark for so long. So we're really, really grateful that you're having this meeting. I, you know, I'm here to answer any questions that you have. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Choi. So I just want to be a little clear that although it's not a Q and A for our public, this is a deliberation for the council members. If there are questions that the council members have on anything with regard to the petition, to the petition, I appreciate Ms. Choi's request to stay on. And at that time, if a council member has a question, we will direct the question to Ms. Choi. But again, that will be during our deliberations as council members.
Oh, by the way, I told Ms. Everett in advance that I invited my colleague Rachel Ford, who's also a District 25 parent, that she, she's the author of the petition. She's the author of the survey that led to the letter that led to the petition. So she's very capable of answering any questions and I, I welcome her with me to speak, if that's okay with you.
I think we will address it at the time our council members deliberate. But thank you for that offer. Thank you again.
I don't see any people, any other parents who would like to make a public comment.
There's one parent asked me to read her statement that she wrote in Spanish. And she just said, um, I asked the committee to please, to please support this petition and to please sign it as a committee. Thank you.
Thanks for catching that comment, Carly.
Thank you, Julia. Are we approaching the 30-minute mark or we?
You have five more minutes in your public comment time, but I don't see anybody else who's signed up.
Okay, so I'm going to request one more time if there are any, is there anybody from the public that would like to make a statement? Now is the time to make that statement. We are limiting it to two minutes. We have a few minutes left. I do not want to exclude anyone. So please, if you'd like to speak, put your name, first and last name, and the word speak, and I will give you the floor. If not, I will move forward. Okay, so I am going to move to the next portion on our agenda. And that is for the council members to speak. Do I have anyone who would like to start? If you raise your hand, I will start with you. Otherwise, I'll go one by one. Okay, Anne Marie, I see you're raising your hand. So why don't we start with Anne Marie Kinnable? She is one of our CEC members. If you could introduce yourself to the community, who you are, who you represent, and you can make your statement, Anne Marie. Are you here?
I'm here. Thank you. I didn't know how to raise my hand on the.
I didn't see.
Physically.
Council members can also, before, I don't want to interrupt you, but if council member, if there's a council member who would like to go next, please let me know in the chat. Thank you. I will get to all our council members. Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Thank you. So I am relatively new to being on the CEC. Just came on in September. And it's been an interesting role, definitely an important role that I take seriously. That being said, I have three children, two of which are children that went through District 25 with IEPs. And I also have a son with Down syndrome that's in District 75. So the parents here that gave their stories, I feel you in a big way because I had to rearrange my living room. I spent eight months sleeping on the floor or on my couch so that my son didn't leave in the middle of the night to go find his school bus. It's a rough road and it's been really, really hard. So I really want you to understand that I'm coming from this in a perspective as a parent and as a CEC member. And so what I'm about to say is probably not going to make me a very popular CEC member or parent. But I have to say that when I choose the things that I'm going to advocate for and how I'm going to advocate and what I'm going to stand up for, I need to be really, really solid in that cause. And with that being said, advocacy is very complicated, that it can be good and it can be bad. It could, it could, you know, we want the best intention, but sometimes it backfires and doesn't get the result that we want. And the result that I would want in this is for, of course, for the city to take, you know, take heed and see our children are suffering, my children that don't have a disability suffer. You know, you know, all of the children are suffering in this. It's, it's not, you know, some more than others, but you know, it's very, it's, it's very specific IEP issues and special need issues. And looking at this from a parent, you know, I'm on board. I'll sign it. I'll sign it 50 times if I could, you know. But as a CEC member, I have to think what I'm charged with to do as a CEC member. And that's look at my district and look at what goes on in my district and look at, you know, the data. And looking at the data from this petition, it was, I think, 1,097 parents that were surveyed. I didn't see the survey. You know, I was a little bit, you know, surprised because as a parent with child in both District 75 and District 25, never heard of it, never saw the survey, never heard anything about it until it was brought to our council by Tijuana. So I, I have to question what was on that survey? How was it disseminated to parents? You know, how many people from, you know, the different districts across the city were surveyed? What are the issues that were on the survey? So many questions about that. But coming back to District 25, according to the data that was given, there were approximately 40 or so parents out of that 1,097 that were from District 25. That could be one school. That could be a school that didn't have a speech teacher. And their IEPs were violated because they didn't have a speech teacher. Not trying to, to lessen the impact of that, of course. I mean, my daughter was without a speech teacher for six months. They couldn't find one. They couldn't find one. They couldn't find one. You know, you, you have to just deal with certain things that come along with being an IEP parent in general. And COVID certainly has magnified all of our issues. But that 40 or so parents in District 25 doesn't give me enough of a picture of what the issues are in District 25 to say, I'm on board with this as a council member. I'm on board with as a parent, you got me. But as a council member, I have to look at what I'm charged with in this role. And this role in District 25, I don't see that this is a strong enough case to say this is a District 25-wide issue with 40 people that took the survey. Had we done, you know, one of the things that our, our council was working on was a family forum to canvas our parents in this district with what's going on. Come here, tell us. We're going to listen to you and we're going to take it back to the superintendent and have a conversation and say, this is what our District 25 needs are. This is what's happening. And work with the school district to figure out what's going on. Is it the school? Is it five schools? Is it all the schools? And really get a picture of what we need. So this petition, while it's valid and necessary, is not appropriate for a CEC to sign as a whole. Any CEC that would be appropriate to sign this as a whole would be District 75. If I was on the CE, District 75, I would be advocating perhaps differently in that capacity. So I have to say that as a council member, this petition is too all over the place. There's too many issues that, that vary from District 75 to District 25 that just doesn't make it strong enough for me to support as a council member. That's all. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your words, Anne Marie. Is there another CEC member who would like to go next? Aquila, I'm sorry. Are you raising your hand?
Yeah, me too.
Everybody. So go ahead, Aquila. You're next.
Okay, I'm Aquila Ozorio. I hold a seat for the IEP. I've been working very, very hard on this topic from the moment I walked into this seat and tried my best to advocate on behalf of the parents and children, which, you know, with children with special needs and it's been very hard. I wish we had more time to have a conversation on this petition with the ones that created it and get more input into it because it was thrown at us. And not only was it thrown at us, it also was then put for a special meeting very fast. And it would have been a beautiful idea if we were all just had came into one force and collaborated on what we were already trying to do with the forum, with helping parents and getting our own survey out to do what it is that we need to do for District 25. I think the petition is a great idea. I just wish I just had more information on it besides just reading it. Again, what Anne Marie was saying, what was in the survey? What, you know, what was the trigger points? What were, because I never received it and I have two children with IEPs and I did not receive the survey. So it was, you know, very new to me just to receive it, you know, not so long ago. I'm all for the petition. I would, if it's going to help the kids in any way, it's a beautiful idea. But it still needs to be more, you know, a conversation about it. And I was told that there's a deadline. I'm not really sure the actual date of the deadline of this. But I think that the subcommittee that we do have pertaining to our council should have been a little bit more informed so that we can bring it to our own council and everybody will be on the same page. So I just think there should be a little bit more information on it before the whole council signs off on it.
Is that your statement, Aquila? Or you have anything further?
That's it.
Thank you, Aquila. Do I have anyone who would like to speak next? Tawana, I see you raising your hand. It's your turn. Tawana Rivera. You have to unmute yourself. Carly, can you help?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so basically, good evening, everyone. I want to say thank you to all that joined us this evening. Thank you to the council members for attending the meeting. Thank you to all of the invited guests that have attended as well, as far as the parents and also Senator Lou and anyone else that chose to sign on and receive the information that we're providing this evening regarding the Protect New York City Special Education Petition. My only comment I want to make is that I really don't think there is any more, in my opinion, any more information that really would need to be shared to change anyone on the council's perspective as to whether they are going to support or not support the petition. I think everyone's mind is basically made up at this time. I think the issues on the petition are very clear. I don't think there's any confusion. I myself know that that petition was circulated in our CEC 25 email way before I brought it to the council's attention. I remember receiving it. And it was, it was a distribution, it went to all the CCs. So it wasn't just our CC. Maybe it got lost in the emails because we're all flooded by them daily. And I understand that, but it was sent out. I mean, if someone chose not to read it, that's, that is their, you know, that's their choice. Like I said previously, no one's hand is tied behind their back to sign the petition. You could either choose to support it or not. And basically, that's it. I am here for support of the special need children of the entire New York City. My seat on the council is specifically to show my support for the students and parents of District 25. But I just feel that this petition was a little bit different. I don't know if the CEC has ever signed a petition before, let alone a petition that was citywide. I thought this was a very good idea. It didn't have a chance to be brought to the Special Education Committee. Unfortunately, the petition was about to run out and we wouldn't have time to have a meeting with the Special Ed Committee. And then another subsequent meeting to discuss the petition, the petition would have been closed. So that explains why I really didn't want to hold off any more time. There was nothing personal towards anyone. Basically, that's all I want to say. I mean, if, if you want to support it, you can support it. And if you choose not to support it, that is, you know, your free to do that as well. And that's it. I just want to say, you know, thank you to everyone for at least attending tonight's meeting. It shows that you at least do have, you do want to support the community in whatever way you can. That's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do I have anyone next?
Jo, I'll go next.
Hi, Rashmi. Go ahead.
Hi, sorry. I also don't know how to raise hand.
Even see most of the members. I appreciate that you spoke up.
Okay. Thank you so much, all of you guys to be here, for being here. And I know it's a very heavy topic and it's a different topic. It's a topic that concerns children and families and parents. For me, quality is more important. For me, quality is more important than quantity. I also came here as I was voted in to be one of the members of the council. So I, as a parent, and I'm not going to take too much time to go behind reasoning because we all have heard data and everybody's perspective, the audience and our council members, I'll just say it straightforward. I, as a parent, would support this petition. It is a citywide petition. I would also support it as a CEC member and I can even say with a reservation that I do not know personally, I don't know. And again, it's because I have not done my due diligence to understand if it could be how much of a District 25 is affected by this or not. I know that we as a district are amazing, our teachers, our principals, we do an amazing job. But there are issues that are beyond our umbrella that don't come to us and we're hands are tied. So with that perspective, I feel that if I support a citywide petition that would help us on long term, then I support it as a CEC member and as a parent. That's my, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Rashmi. Do I have someone else who's going to volunteer next?
Oh, go ahead, Victor.
You can go first.
No, it doesn't matter, I raised my hand.
Ladies first.
Christine, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, so. Can you guys hear me? Sorry. Okay, so I have some concerns and reservations regarding this signing, signing the petition as a CEC. Things that are going through my head right now are, how many CECs in the city of New York signed as a body? Are there any other CECs that have signed this petition as one unit? Could it be considered a conflict for our CEC to sign this petition that is sponsored by a profit organization that charges families money to advocate for their children? Is this considered a conflict of interest? As a parent of a special education student for over twelve years, I totally support the cause and I will sign the petition as a parent. And I will also recommend that the CEC of District 25 prepare our own resolution to give to the Board of Education tailored to our district needs and the students. But I cannot support the CEC as a whole signing this petition. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Christine Caniglio. I'd like to move now to Victor Lee.
Hi, my name is Victor Lee and I'm a CEC member. And I don't have anybody in special ed or IEP type of scenario. However, from my personal experience, I see sometimes that an action creates more opportunity for others, other situation. So I know everybody got affected by COVID knocking a lot, not just IEP student, but entire student body. You know, average students also got affected as well. And this is not easy for everybody, but I do feel that the service, I did read the petition. I don't fully understand all the intricacy of it and certain aspect that I do want clarification. But I do realize that if some of the kids are not getting a specialty need and we don't take any action, it's not something that we want to say or just stand by and not do anything. I myself is a licensed massage therapist. I fall under a lot of rankings. And from my experience, if I want to get certain thing done as pastor and laws in massage therapy, I first have to get approval through the chiropractic group. They are the first lobbying group followed by acupuncturists and by licensed massage therapists. Why I say this? Because if I don't take any action supporting chiropractic needs and we never trigger down to acupuncture needs and we never trigger down to licensed massage therapy needs. So therefore, I would sign as a parent and I would say I would also support it as a CEC. Only because that I see that it is something that we need to discuss and you need to demonstrate that we are taking certain action. And even though other CEC haven't demonstrated that, we could be the leader of setting an example. And I do feel that this citywide will have some impact on our district. And I just want to make sure that our research is allocated accordingly. Thank you, and that's my statement.
Thank you, Victor. Moving along to our other CEC members. I see Eddie here and Brooke.
My name is Brooke Sturgeon. I have a student with an IEP and autism. And I sit on the special needs subcommittee. I'm going to agree with you guys, this year has been extremely hard from last year to now. My son had meltdowns, I couldn't get him, it was fight after fight. However, the district has been trying, they can't give me a speech teacher if there is no speech teacher to give me. They can't. I've talked to the principals, they can't give what they don't have. So I don't see exactly how this pertains to District 25 when we do get our answers. When the subcommittee had the top OTs, PT, we brought them to the parents so you can contact them directly. This is a very passionate thing for me and I will fully sign this as a parent. I will give it out to my fellow parents in my schools. But in good conscience, I can't sign it as a CEC member because I see how hard the district is working. It might not work for us and it might be a hell of a battle. But I see that they are trying and that they're bringing us info. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Brooke. Eddie, are you ready? Do you have comments, Ed Kim?
Yeah, hi, yeah, so. Yeah, I've been, I was one of the council members to support the special meeting, as you may or may not know. But it wasn't to agree or disagree with pertaining to this petition, but just wanted to at least have an open conversation with the, with the parents to get some maybe feedback and, and, and not to completely shut it down from the get-go. So just to give it a chance to put it out there as an open forum, sort of, and then just to give it a chance to the parents of District 25 with IEPs, again, in, in the schools that my kids are going to, I have not heard any parents who had issue, like, I would say major issues with, with their kids getting the proper support they needed. A couple of, you know, just maybe a couple of barriers here and there they had to overcome. But the principals of the schools that, at least my kids or, or, or a lot of my friends or constituents that they go to really never had major issues with, with those as well. So, and to the, to the parents of all the, everybody in District 25, you may or may not know, we do have a subcommittee on IEPs who are, who hear you. And we represent you. And tonight, regardless of a petition or not, they are here as parents and as your active voices within the district. And if there's anything, I mean, we hear your issues and, and I guarantee you, they are listening. And, and, and we, as a committee, we're committed to everybody within the district. And again, with that being said, I, as a parent, would support it as a petition, yes. As, again, as being elected to the CEC and knowing who I represent and, and what, what my, and the impartial decision that I must make on behalf of the district and for the district alone, I would have to vote on not signing it as a whole. But as a parent, I would definitely support it and sign it. So that's, that's where I stand.
Thank you, Ed Kim. Is Lilic here? Lilic is another one of our. Monica, you're here?
Yes, I am.
Welcome. Do you have a statement that you'd like to make?
Yes.
Monica, one second, is Lilic here? Because, okay.
I'm in here.
Okay, so I'm going to make Monica go, if you don't mind, then I'll go to you.
Yeah, it's okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Monica. You have to be unmuted.
All right, sorry. What I would say that is, I agree with Brooke. I will feel more comfortable signing a resolution that is more suited for the District 25 needs and not one developed by a for-profit company. As a parent, I have no problem, but I think as a CEC, I think it's better for me to vocalize that. I have a student, I have a son who has an IEP. And as a parent, I am concerned and I would, no problem signing it, but I think as a whole CEC, I don't agree with it. I think we should definitely do one that is more suited for our district versus just signing this one.
Okay, Monica, thank you for your comments. I will now go to Lily. Do you have a comment, Lily?
I'm sorry, yeah, my son is have the IEP and then I'm agree about the policy. And yeah, it's good if like the CEC will sign up for them because my son is really struggle a lot with the remote learning and then the teacher from the public school where he attended, sometime it's coming out about one week twice, but sometime it's not coming out or show anything. So him really struggle and then needed help for me after I'm working, go home. So sometimes it's like them him literally thing because I'm must taking him one by one. The teacher is profile for the IEP never, just only one week, one time he show, show up. So it's a week, week one is just only twice or third time coming up is just only half hour, but sometimes it's not showing up. And then the another one, the teacher, sometimes there is like the old, the schedule is really going on the same with the another teacher, so they're not making up the schedule. Yeah, so it's really hard time for my son, so I'm really agree if send out what the policy that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lily. So I believe I've gone through all the CEC members' comments and I will now read my, my comment and make my statements as your president and as council member. So I would like to publicly state for the record that special education and special needs is a very, and I repeat, very important topic and one in which I, as well as this council, take very seriously. The needs of special services has become even more apparent during these trying times. However, this CEC has never used the voice of others when it comes to voting on resolutions. We have always had our very own voice. In the past six years or so that I have served on this council, we never signed on to anyone else's resolution or petition. We have always created our own voice. I would like to highlight some of the voices CEC 25 has made in the past that have had an extraordinary impact in our community, if not the city at large. The largest being the Free Lunch for All Students, which stems from a resolution originating in District 25 and led to an important change citywide. Then we had the resolution regarding the Shazat, specialized high school admissions testing, and the resolution regarding school safety. Both of these stemmed from issues that covered the city at large and many other districts. Yet, CEC for District 25 preferred to create its own resolution tailored to the voices of our district. Again, another strong statement that I feel was respected by the Department of Education and the community at large. Most recently, we voted and approved on our own resolution this past November amidst citywide concern regarding the pandemic and the opt-in window for remote learners, which led to the district making a strong statement in its vote of no confidence to our leaders in matters concerning clear communication, parent engagement, and parent voice. We are now confronting issues concerning special needs, protecting special education and the need to improve special support services. CEC District 25, being unanimously supportive of the concerns of special needs, has created its own special needs subcommittee that has worked with our district. The subcommittee has done a tremendous job in unpacking the system as they have the experience, the knowledge, and the passion in terms of bringing attention to the issue at hand and calling for improvement and change. We had our very own public meeting this past February 3rd where the resources were provided to the community and the subcommittee was able to showcase their work as it pertains to this district. However, their work remains unfinished. We are now called here to vote on a petition that was not created by us. It is not our voice. The issue is no different than the other issues we have tackled in the past where we had tailored the language to be our very own. The petition at hand was not created by us. I have a lot of questions in my mind. Are these voices the voices of others? Were these published by an agency that runs a business for profit as an advocacy group? Is this agency using our name, CEC District 25, to showcase its own interests? Has any other CEC signed on as one voice? Does this create a conflict of interest? Yes, I am supportive and sensitive to the needs of special education and services, but I prefer to defer this back to our special needs subcommittee being respectful of the work they created in our district. What I'm saying is, we have begun to tackle the needs of special education. We have started to do some serious work. And I would prefer that this council create its own resolution like we have always done. In essence, I think we should prepare, prepare our very own voice and have the subcommittee continuing its path so we may create our very own resolution. Therefore, I would vote no to the petition. Not because I don't agree with some of the language that is stated in the petition, but because I believe we need to prepare our own document and our own statements on behalf of CEC for District 25. We have never signed off on resolutions or petitions created by others. We have always created our own. I say no to the petition, but not to the courts. We need to create our own statements regarding special education and special, special support services. And we need to vote on our own statements. Thank you. So at this time, if there are any other CEC members that would like to present a question to anyone, to the petition writers, or if you want to make a final statement before we take this on to the roll call vote, I will allow council member to comment. I see Akila is raising her hands. Go ahead, Akila.
Yes, I would like to know, when we had our special meeting for children with special needs and IEPs, why wasn't this broadcasted so that the parents could come out and get the proper information that they needed when we were advocating at that particular time? We had a whole meeting and some people came out, but it wasn't advertised as it was on Twitter and Facebook and everywhere else about this particular special meeting. But when we had our council meeting, where we had the top people there that if parents had any issues or problems, they could have addressed them with. That if parents had any issues or problems, they could have addressed them with those particular people and got the answer they were looking for. The emails, the phone numbers, who to, who to contact in any type of way. Why wasn't this? Put on that type of platform for that meeting? Because I'm reading the chat and it seems very disrespectful, you know, because. That meeting was broad and it, it had a lot of people there that the district brought out that wasn't just district wide. They were there to answer the questions for the parents to get the information that they needed. So I would like to know why, why now? Because they choose, they have this petition and their, you know. Their nonprofit or profit organization or whatever, it's, you know, top dog. Now all of a sudden, they're doing so much. And the work that we're putting out there is like mediocre. Now we're not giving any answers. We're not expressing ourselves. We're not for the children. I'm for the children. If anybody, if you have came to any meetings, you would know from the day I sat in the seat that I am. All for the children. Everything that I do is for the kids. Especially for the children with I E Ps and special needs. So at the end of the day, like, I would like to know, why is it that you did not, as a, as your advocate? And y'all seen that we were having this special meeting, you did not promote our special, our not, um. Our calendar meeting. Why didn't you promote that on Twitter and Facebook? For the special needs children and parents to come in and get the proper information. But now that we're having a special meeting for the petition, now all of a sudden, it's okay to put it all on social media.
Thank you, Akila.
I'd like to comment as well next show.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify, as I stated when I first introduced myself, I do have three children with special needs. It's really insulting as a parent and as a C E C member to be told that I don't care. And I'm not listening or that I'm white and that's why I don't care. I'm sorry, this is not a race issue. I'm Puerto Rican, actually. If you want to know the truth, I'm Puerto Rican. But what does that have to do with anything? I'm not for it as a C E C member. I am for it as a parent. I do understand where everyone's coming from and to have to defend that is insulting. It doesn't make me a bad parent. It doesn't make me a bad person to not want to sign it from a C E C perspective. I'm agreeing as a parent. And I don't think I should have to defend myself or my, my point of view because. There are angry parents here that have needs that they feel aren't being met. I have needs that aren't being met as well. Like I said, I have children who haven't received speech services for six months. I have, you know, a, a son that was in and out of school. How do you tell a child with Down syndrome? Oh, you're going to school this week, you're not going to school next week. You're going to school this week and not going to school next week. Like I said, I slept on the floor for eight months. I had to sleep in front of my door to keep my son from leaving. I get it. It's not that I don't get it. I don't agree as a C E C. I have to look at my district. I don't have a problem with the district because they communicate with me. Maybe I'm lucky. Maybe I'm lucky with my school P S one twenty-nine. I don't have a problem with them. When there's something wrong, they let me know. If there's a delay, they let me know. Did I have to fight to get my child's I E P? Yes, I did. But once I got it, I really haven't had a problem that wasn't communicated to me. I'm not left out there wondering like, hey, where's my, what's going on here? I don't have to chase the school down. Maybe some parents do, and that's why I said. I E Ps are very tricky and where they're stemming from is very tricky. You have to really look at it individually. You can't blanket it and say, this is the whole problem. Because not every school is going to have the same problem. Not every, not every person is going to experience the same issues with their I E Ps. Or with their schools or with their principals or with their team. This petition covers a lot of ground and a lot of different areas. It covers special needs. It covers District Seventy-Five. It covers, you know, uh, you know, in and out of school. It covers, it covers attendance. I mean, there's a lot of things crammed into this petition. That maybe should be broken down and attacked in smaller groups. Maybe that would make it a little bit tighter for me. Maybe that would make me be on more, you know, more on board with it. It's so broad. And some of it doesn't even apply anymore. The kids are rolling back into school and, and these are decisions that. They're coming from this state. Like, I, I don't know what that, that, you know, having the kids go back to school that, that we're getting, you know, the government is telling us what to do. I mean, how is that going to really? You know, make an effect. We, they all know we want our kids back in school. They all know they need to be back in full time. They're regressing like crazy. I had, besides sleeping on the floor. My son went from being a verbal child with Down syndrome that I was damn proud of. To being a child that sat and, and spun on the couch all day long and was hurting himself. I worked hard for twelve years to get him where he was and I watched all of that disappear in months. Believe me, I get it. But it's insulting to come here and imply to the members of the C E C that don't agree. That this is a C E C district-wide issue that we're wrong or insensitive or racist. It just means we have coming from different perspectives and it should be respected. I respect you. I respect where you're coming from. I share your, your, your hurt. I share what you're going through. But I don't agree and I don't have to agree, just like you don't have to agree with me, but don't put me down for it.
Anne Marie, I appreciate the comments. Thank you again. I'm gonna allow, uh. Tawana and then Monica to speak and I believe we'll be through. Go ahead, Tawana. You have to unmute yourself. You're not, you're still muted. Okay.
Okay, thank you again. Um, I just want to say that I. Really am not angry. I just want everyone to know that because I hear a lot of anger. I hear a lot of frustration. Um, on either side of the petition to support or not to support. I really am not angry. I really do not hold any grudges with anyone. I mean, life is too short. Every day we're faced with another dilemma. Here is a society, here is a community, you know, there's so much going on, pandemic. I mean, you name it. There's just so many other issues, including the issues involving the students with special needs. I mean. I'm just really not angry and I just don't understand how some people seem to be showing that they're angry and they're frustrated. I am, um, you know, I supported us having the special meeting. It's not going the way I would have planned it to go. I knew that a long time ago, but you know, I let it be what it was gonna be. Um, and I just put, I just put my best foot forward. Because that's what I'm here to do. I'm not here to try to force anyone to make any decision. Either way. We're still a committee. We're still supposed to work as a team. There are going to be tons of other issues that come up in our future that we have to either agree or disagree on. And I feel that the maturity level has to be there. We have to realize that it's okay to disagree, to agree, to disagree. I hold no grudges and I just wish that. Um, you know, I could be wrong. It's just my perspective and we spoke about perspective. I could be wrong, but I just wish that. All of the C E C could get on that same page that there's no reason. Although we had some words in the past, I'm not gonna pretend that didn't happen. We did have some words back and forth. No one is perfect, you know? From this day forward, I just hope that we could come together as a team, either way the petition goes. Um, that's all I want to say, that we just need to have unity, no matter what. That's it, just unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Tawana. Thank you again. Monica, did you want to speak or?
No, 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 I'm good.
Okay, okay. So I, yeah, I, I, I don't see any other ra, hands raised. I just want to comment. Look, we are a community of respect. We've always respected the different voices. Um, I'm not affected by the comments. But, you know, we are a community of respect. We allow people to speak and make the comments and we in turn would expect that. Others respect our voice as well. So, uh, moving on, I would like to go now on to the, uh. Vote by roll call on whether C E C for District Twenty-Five. Agrees to sign on to this petition as a single body. Call the roll call vote on this.
Ready?
Yes.
Joseph Di Benedetto?
I vote no.
Okay, Christine Caniglio?
No.
Tawana Rivera? Tawana Rivera?
We'll come back to her if you want.
I vote yes, thank you.
Okay, okay. Got you. Um, I lost my spot. I'm sorry. Rashmi Krishnraj?
I vote yes.
Okay, Victor Lee?
Yes.
Lilic Lujianti? Okay, Akila Sorio?
No.
Monica Patino?
No.
Edward Kim?
I vote no.
Um, Brooke Sturgeon? And Anne Marie Knebel?
I vote no.
Okay.
Okay, so my tally is we have. Four guesses?
Yes.
And how many no's?
Seven no's.
And seven no's, so the decision by. Quorum is that we vote no on signing off on the petition as a C E C for District Twenty-Five. So be it. Um, so the council has rendered its decision and has spoken. Um, are there any further motions or do I have any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Okay, so once again, we thank everyone for joining us. We, uh, decided to sign off as no on the petition. And we look forward to hopefully seeing you at our next scheduled. Calendar meeting. Uh, I, Juliana, I want to just make a, a request for a motion because. Uh, we have a calendar meeting scheduled for March third, which is a week from Wednesday. And we're supposed to have our town hall with our chancellor, which may be pushed. So I don't know if we're going to move forward with our calendar meeting on the third or if we're going to defer it. To when the chancellor is going to meet for the town hall. Um, did you get any feedback on that, Juliana? Or are we gonna assume that we're not going to have our, our, our calendar meeting on March third?
Um, I didn't get any feedback unfortunately, but the assumption would be that you would keep your regularly scheduled meeting on March third. Unless the council votes to move it to, um. You, you could vote in an open-ended way to say that you move your March meeting to the chancellor's availability.
Okay, so at this time, our council members are still on. Do I hear any motion? To move our calendar meeting from March third to the. Scheduled town hall with the chancellor, which will occur in the month of March.
We don't have a business meeting with that? The, we don't have a business meeting if we move it?
So we are typically at our town hall with the chancellor, we don't have a business meeting, correct? So if we don't move the meeting, then I suggest we keep our March third meeting and follow it with. The business meeting, if that's what you want.
I think I like the idea to have a business meeting because that's where we discuss a lot of issues in March twenty-ninth or whenever we all decide. It's like further down the, down in the month, I mean.
Understood. So I hadn't, I, I hear no motions to postpone our March third meeting. So let's keep our March third calendar meeting. Um, we will, uh, we will deal, it might be a shorter meeting and we'll follow with that, with our business meeting. That's fine. Okay, so I look forward to seeing all of you at our March third.
Joe, I think Monica has something to say, but she says she can't unmute.
I'm sorry, Monica. I don't see you. Can you unmute Mon, Monica?
I don't see her either.
She's towards the end. I'm trying.
Thank you. Muted.
I asked her to unmute. I sent her.
I don't even see for you.
She's at the bottom, but she's still muted.
Monica, you can't unmute?
Monica, you still have to push the, the unmute button.
Yeah, you gotta.
You can make her a co-host, Carly. She left and came back. No, she, she lost that. She left and came back.
Oh, okay, hold on. Well, I asked her to unmute, I knew. Okay. She's a co-host now.
Oh, now she can unmute. Oh, yeah.
I'm so sorry. I, I got. Uh, from the meeting. Um, I missed the beginning of it, but I, I think what I heard was. We were gonna have the, the town hall meeting towards the end of the month and to keep our business meeting. Is that correct?
So I was asking for any motion to postpone our March third calendar meeting for the extended. Date on the town hall with the chancellor, but nobody made a motion to postpone that date.
Can I make a motion that we just have a business meeting and not our cal, can we do that, Juliana? Can we just have our business meeting on March third? And have our calendar meeting when the chancellor comes the end of the month?
Is Eloise here? Eloise, are you able to comment? Can you unmute Eloise or Juliana? Cause we have our face representatives here. Hi, Eloise. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Yes, uh, you, you can have, um, business meeting only, uh, with the council's approval.
Okay, so I make a motion to make March third a business meeting only. And have our, oh, okay, Monica. I didn't even finish.
Okay, I believe we need to vote on that, correct? Okay, so why don't we go through the roll call vote on. Postponing our calendar meeting to the next scheduled town hall with Chancellor Coranza. But conducting our business meeting at seven o'clock on March third, correct?
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Sorry, I thought I was talking. Sorry.
I, I agree, yes.
Okay, Christine Caniglio?
Yes.
Um, Tawana Rivera? Okay, I'll come back to her. Victor Lee? Victor? What was that?
Yes, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes. Tawana, can you hear me? Okay, I'll come back again. Um, let me see, Victor. Lilic Lujianti?
Agree.
Okay, Rashmi Krishnraj?
Agree.
Hi, Carly. I'm in agreement.
Okay, okay.
I couldn't unmute, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. Um, let me go back. Akila Sorio?
I agree.
Monica Patino?
Agree.
Edward Kim?
Agree.
Uh, Brooke Sturgeon? And Anne Marie Knebel?
Agreed.
Okay.
Well, I believe it's unanimous that we will have our business meeting on March third. And at that time, perhaps we will know the exact date of our town hall with Chancellor Coranza for our calendar meeting. And we can present that to the community at that time. Okay? Uh, thank you for that. Are there any motions to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Akila and Victor. Thank you. Okay, everyone, once again, thank you for your time and your comments and have a good evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.